Everyone, it's six o'clock and we'll go ahead and start December Washburn School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Our first item on our agenda is to hear us from two spotlights, but our first one is about the Costa Rica meeting, my students. The teacher's talking about it. I just wanted to turn it to the left in front of everybody else here. I believe that Dave can help me if you can, but coming in just a little bit so that the microphone can queue up and the camera too. Dave, can you tell us if they're in good spot?
Yeah, we'll talk.
I have screen share and they're not going to see that.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So we did this educational trip to Costa Rica. We had a huge amount of support from the Washburn Community Education Foundation to help us get there. And we work with a travel program out of Wisconsin. They're in Green Bay and it's called Interact and I pick them because of that, because that's what they're about is interaction. So each of us are gonna tell you a bit more about it. This one is Sandy, isn't it?
Hello, I'm Sandy. So one of my favorite parts of the trip was the service, service project. We purchased sod for this local school. It was really cool. It was kind of a really awful space. There was stones, bricks and just like dirt wasn't safe for the kids to play in. So we get to put down all of this beautiful sod and talk to the kids and it was really awesome.
We're freezing again, Dave.
Let's just staying with the service project. Okay. We worked really hard, like I said, the WCEF grant provided most of our funding, but the kids worked really hard. We did all of these different fundraising activities and they were especially motivated to earn extra money. So we could do the add-on extra cost whitewater rafting and canopy tour, which they did. They raised the money, so we'll talk about those more as we go. And this one is that you kind of?
Uh, yeah, so for the first half of the trip, we stayed at a hotel that was maybe a fifteen minute drive outside of the city that we flew into. And it was really kind of like a camp style because there was like different cabins and stuff, which I thought was really cool. And then a pool, which I think we swim in every night. And then we went to a different lodge, more like in the rainforest. Um, and that's the picture on the right. And that was kind of a camp style too. It was like a little path and then some yurts with some beds and it was, it was really nice. There's a pool that you could swim in and watch the monkeys in the trees and it was really nice. That's the rainforest hotel.
Oh, this is me right here. I'm Tommy. My favorite part of the trip was food, the food, the food is really good. We had chefs that made our every meal, some breakfast, lunch and dinner. We get to try new foods like fried tilapia, apaya. We had guided, uh, guayopinto with every, every meal, like breakfast, lunch, dinner is really good. Kind of miss it now. We got to try some like the world's best coffee, coffee is what they claim. It was really good and I just learned that I love trying. Well, I didn't really learn, but I just love trying new foods and I'm glad I got to do that.
Yeah, we just work together a lot. And we, they had ping pong at one of the places we stayed, which was great fun. Yeah. And then here's just some of the things we saw. As we were cruising along, we weren't too close to that alligator though. And this person couldn't be here, but the kids, the international club chose this trip for a tropical rainforest focus. So we saw animals, animals and more animals. It was really cool, those giant blue crabs and blue morpho butterfly and all kinds of stuff. We even saw a sloth. Yes, we saw sloths in the trees and lots of different kinds of monkeys, although I think the howlers were the most interesting. And then we, one day we got a nice beach day at this national park, Manuel Antonio. That's a blue morpho, their wings are blue when they open them and they're brown when they're closed. All right.
Uh, we went to a pineapple farm and learned about like the growing process and how to choose good pineapples. There was so, so many pineapples. We took a bus like through the acres and it just kept going like pineapples as far as the eye could see. They also gave us a break in that picture or eating a pineapple. It was like freshly picked from the field. It was really interesting experience and it's very good pineapple. And then when we got back from there, they also had drinks from pineapple that we tried. It was very uninteresting.
You go to the store and look at the labels, a lot of our pineapples are from Costa Rica.
My favorite part of this trip was probably also the food, but I also thought the camp tours were awesome. We were like really far off the ground flying through this trees. It was pretty cool. All of our two guides for that was pretty cool. And we also got really close to some howler monkeys and we kind of talked to them.
Right, I'm gonna do this part with my daughter because she's sick, but this was her favorite, favorite part of the trip because the rafting was super exciting and she just also thought that the guide who took us on each boat really made the experience even more fun because they were so entertaining and just really took the time to just make it a great experience for the kids. It was something at least I'll never forget.
We just had to put Ferdinand in. We went to one tourist, tourist shop and they had this probable who was super friendly, so. And souvenir shopping, I really like interact because they take you out and of course, our buying souvenirs is a great way to support the local community.
Oh, so we went to a coffee and chocolate making workshop in the woods. So it was, it was like a way on fifteen minute hike out to this little pavilion in the middle of the jungle, which was really cool. And then you got to see like the step-by-step process to making chocolate and coffee. And we got to try all the ingredients in the beginning and then at the end, the end was a lot better. But it was really fun. It was really cool because I've never seen anything like that before.
I'm just gonna finish by reading something from a student who had to go to basketball practice. Sorry, I hope we're not taking too long, but there's so much we could say. But he said, we saw awesome vegetation everywhere we went. I think I saw howler monkeys almost every day. I was able to experience new adventures and cultures that I haven't experienced anywhere else. I took risks that taught me things about myself, practiced how to be more independent, to be a team member and to problem solve. I thought that was pretty nice to hear from the kids.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone, what would you like if a student is not sure if they want to go? I mean, are like, what would you say to someone that's kind of like on the fence, like not sure if like this would be successful at all?
Uh, I would say just, just go. Just learn from the experience. I mean, you might not like it, which unlikely, but um, if you do, just never do it again. But you most likely will find something that you enjoy in the experience.
Thank you, thank you for coming and presenting, sharing. It's just really fun to see what you all do. Going back to conferences. Thanks for taking me on. All right, moving on to the student achievement. So a second spotlight tonight focuses on student achievement specifically with the school report cards coming out in the middle of November. It was after most recent school board meeting, so it's important for us to focus on it as soon as possible here in December. Um, I did have a, there is a nice document in here. It's also being found on DPI website, there are credit plans. It's very helpful. It's also actually on the front page of our school website. For anybody who is not familiar with school report cards or just looking to learn a little bit more, it kind of walks you through all the different pieces. We could really talk about this topic all, all evening and actually weeks, I mean, we could spend lots of time on it. So I'll give a pretty brief overview, but this will be something that will continue to report out in the school board meetings. And of course, it's something that is a part of our staff meetings, daily meetings, daily work. Um, this year for the district, our overall score was a fifty-five point six meets few expectations. That is lower than it has been before. And it is something that has really sparked some acceleration and motivation for us. We hold ourselves to a high standard and we want to be exceeding expectations and we want that score to be at or very close to a hundred. Uh, when you're looking at the report card, you consider priority, priority area weights. There are four different areas and this is for all districts and all schools. But each area is ranked a little bit, rated a little bit differently depending on the district. And even within our district, each school has a different percentage of those priority areas. Um, this also differs, this area differs quite a bit from our district to our neighboring school districts. So if you look at our achievement at the blue, that's definitely our strength, our student achievement. Um, and our neighboring districts are, I think around a seven percent, they're about half or even less than that of what our achievement is. But even though each district is compared a little bit differently and it impacts the overall score, the bottom line is that we want our students proficient to advance in all areas, especially math and literacy. So we're really focusing on those academic achievement scores. You can see here it has them over multiple years. You'll see there is a gap there. There was no state assessment in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year. And, uh, but you can still see sort of what the trends look like there on the bottom. The light blue is advanced. And the purple is proficient. Yellow is basic and orange is below me. That is for a district. It does differ a little bit from school to school. You can see there's some different strengths, there's some growth in some different areas. Uh, but that's an overall snapshot of what our district looks like and our goal is that we are all purple and blue. Um, a little bright spot for us is ACT scores comparing the Washburn, which is on the left with the green to the state average on the right with yellow. So Washburn, our ACT average is a twenty-one point four is our score. At the state level, it's nineteen point two, so we're over two points higher than the state average. And that was a discrepancy that's different than what our forward and ACT aspire results are showing us. This is something to be proud of, but of course we will continue to grow in this area as well. Each of our school report cards, as I mentioned before, are just a little bit different. So I will review each of those scores too. Um, like I said, I could go into depth and we could really dig into each one of these, but I will give a basic overview. Elementary was an overall score of six, one point one and three star meeting expectations. Middle school is at forty-four point eight, uh, which did fail to meet expectations at one star. High school was fifty-five point five meets few expectations at two stars. And district, you saw on the first slide, was a fifty-five point six meets few expectations. One spot I did want to highlight was high school ELA with some nice increase in proficiency in, in English language arts in high school. And each of those priority areas are a little bit different from school to school as well. When we look at the school report cards, when we have our school board meetings, when we have staff meetings, PLC meetings, we make financial decisions. Everything we do always comes back to our mission statement. This always guides our work and we'll continue to do that. And our, our mission statement is that we're going to enable students to enter the global society with the knowledge, skill, habits and attitude to be contributing citizens. This is our top priority in everything that we do. Kind of shown by that presentation before this one, we excel in so many of these areas. This is our portrait of a graduate where we call the lifelong learning. And each of those boxes are very important to us. Right now, we know we need to focus on that bottom left box, a knowledgeable person. We need an increase in proficiency in our, all, all content areas, especially math and literacy. But I also want to take a minute just to acknowledge all the amazing opportunities and ways that we thrive in those other areas. And our goal is that we are well-rounded, all students are well-rounded, have really high quality education and we have work to do in that area. When we talk about school improvement work, we had a little overview at our previous school board meeting. Before the data was released publicly, we knew that we had work to do because this isn't a surprise. We are seeing data in our district assessments and in our data assessments. And so we started this process, we sort of had a jumpstart to this process before this was released. And that's forming some different teams of working on this. Ultimately, the who comes down to everybody, students, staff and families, all working collaboratively to ensure that we have a high quality of education for each and every student. Uh, we do have a school improvement committee. This is a new committee. It's at the district level. We have two school board members on that committee. Uh, we have the administrators as well as teacher representatives, uh, reading specialists and math interventionist. And then representatives from CISA twelve as well. They've been really helpful in this process and have been really instrumental among team members. We also have school improvement teams at the building level. I like to call these organizers because they're taking all of the data and information, but also the reality of what happens in the classroom and really helping us stay grounded in that. I think sometimes it's easy to get excited and lofty when you're looking at a plan on paper. We want to make sure that this is the right match when we're thinking about the students and staff who are in our building, learning in our classrooms every day. A big shout out to those team members who've done quite a few meetings. There's an elementary team, middle school team, high school team. We meet separately often. We also meet together to can, uh, maintain consistency throughout the district and our next meetings on Monday. Um, this just does, it, it impacts all staff. This is something that both Ms. Brent and I bring to our staff meetings. It's something that, um, it's just part of our priorities. We set building level smart goals beginning of the year, presented those to the board. Once we saw the data, we reviewed our smart goals and realized that we have the right smart goals in place. We all feel the need to accelerate the process and really push forward. But we also know that we have a really strong foundation in place and we're ready to, ready to move forward. Uh, we also are, this work also occurs in the PLC teams. And just a reminder, PLC is professional learning communities and that's our grade level teams and our content area teams. And so I'm actually got to sit in on a PLC team meeting yesterday when they were working through the math standards and they were switching what their priorities were based on the data that we have in front of us. It was awesome to see that immediate impact it's having. And then of course, I Okay, thanks, David. Uh, just that one-on-one support, we have both Ms. Brent and I work with staff to support them individually, one-on-one. Each staff member sets individual goals related to their professional development, related to the building goals. And this year we tie that directly related to our school improvement plans. I did review this in the previous meeting. This is sort of the plan of how, or the cycle of how we make improvement work happen. Plan, do, study, act, continue to make changes as we go. This cycle is immediate impact. So there are some things we're doing that we're already seeing an impact on. We're already at the study cycle, stage of the cycle where you can see the impact it's having and taking action to update it. And we're seeing a, a growth in student achievement already since putting plans in place, um, just over the last few weeks, some months. Yep. Um, also this, while those short-term small cycles are happening, we have some bigger cycles happening as well. This is a little bit longer term, but we're looking more so at the semester mark in January. We'll have our next star assessment and fast bridge assessment. We have specific areas we've targeted and we'll see growth on. And then of course, we have some long-term work that's gonna happen and this is gonna happen over the course of years. Uh, you can't put all of your eggs in any one of those baskets. All of those are important to create a comprehensive plan and that's what we're doing. And then the most important piece is what, what does this work actually, uh, what does it actually consist of? And so there are a couple of different areas. The test-taking protocol would be that immediate impact. This is a very short-term cycle. We noticed that some of our students, um, maybe aren't motivated or don't have, don't understand the purpose behind testing. And so helping see that ownership in the process and the value behind it. Some students are, we know, hungry when they come to school or don't have a great place to test. Making sure that their basic needs are met so they can do well, that they're prepared, they're comfortable. And given the example previously that if it's a written portion on our state assessment, that they're comfortable typing so that their true skills are reflected in that assessment. And then the middle school team, I'll talk a little bit about what the most recent.
Sure.
Goals been.
Sure.
Yep, in terms of test-taking protocol, high school, there's so many different ones that happen that are high stakes. Um, and so some of the things that we have talked about in our school improvement is how do we build a framework to make sure that the skills that are needed in order to be successful in taking a test, in life, in reading and all those kinds of things? How do we make sure that those skills are really being focused on? Um, so the team has begun building a framework that they are going to present to the staff. Here are the skills that are important to what we're doing. How do we teach them? So I think right now we're up to thirteen or fourteen particular skills. So it could be, how do you read a prompt and really pull out the information that's really important? So if you're reading directions for building something or have to write something in class or whatever that looks like, how do you really pull out that important information? And so then they're gonna present this and the, and the framework that it'll look like and within the classrooms and you know, work on a different skill each week. And then once we exhaust the list that we've created, we're just gonna write, write back to the start and keep going with it. So it's not a one and done. You know, oh, we've already talked about how to pull information from a paragraph. We're good, we're gonna move on. Nope, we're gonna keep bringing it back, we're gonna keep building it. It's a skill that even as adults, we still need to work on those skills. And so we're gonna keep that going. So that's the, the big thing they're building right now. Once we get that protocol framework kind of in place, get it working in adaptable, middle school, high school. We'll shift it down to the elementary and start working on how do we adapt that to fit at the lower levels as well. So that's one of, one of the big things that we started working on, the test-taking protocol.
Of course, this is a, a short-term thing, it's something we want, we can do immediately, but it isn't the end-all, be-all. There are so many other pieces to really high-quality instruction and high-quality learning. And so there are several other instructions. Another one is just the number of instructional minutes and the instructional practices that we use. Uh, the elementary leadership team created a resource regarding, uh, what the recommended minutes are. We worked with CISA twelve and cross-reference several resources and are building additional math and literacy times into our schedules without taking away those amazing things that make us the unique district we are with outdoor learning and the social emotional learning. And so really being creative in how we align those schedules. I know middle school, high school are working on some pretty significant, uh, schedule changes for the following school year.
One of the things that we have noticed with ours, especially in our middle school is the fact that we're teaching some of these core classes in a block. So they do a semester of math heavy. And then the next semester is, well, we're just gonna practice skills because we don't have a math class now. So what we're looking at moving into the next year, we can't change it this year just because of the structure. But moving into next year, not having those core classes as a block. We want to make sure that they're getting solid instruction in all of these cores all the way through the year. So we'll be adjusting that. We'll be looking at how do we make sure that our schedules, middle school and high school are effective. Not a lot of overlapping on things that shouldn't be overlapping. And so the scheduling for us looks at how do we build our schedule to make sure it's an effective one? That is gonna support the needs of our students. So that's gonna be, we're digging into that now.
And then the instructional practices, part of it is we have, we have excellent staff members and, and highlighting the areas of expertise. Sharing those across the boards, we're learning from each other. Our professional development system is set up that way, which is really lends itself well. And that's what kind of what we're finding is our, our system is set up in, in the right way. And we're just gonna take full advantage of that and, and share what we know. Uh, the next one is foundational skills. This will be a big focus of the elementary school. I'm noticing that students are missing some pretty big foundational skills. When it comes to learning that new grade level material, they're doing really well with it. They're picking up quickly on the new concepts. When it comes to fully understanding it and computing it, we, we may be missing some of those skills. An example of this, I think I've used this one before in some of the other meetings is simplifying a fraction. I was working with a sixth grade student who did it. She understood it, she fully comprehended it, really well taught. When it came to then actually computing the math to simplify it, she chose a strategy that was, um, quite a few grade levels below where she would be at. So she was counting by two was all the way up to a pretty big number. It took her a very long time and then she made a small error, which then impacted her answer. And so what we're realizing is additional practice with additions and traction, multiplication, division. And we've already implemented, it's called a math toolkit for each of those. And it's, um, it's fun, it's game-based, it's very similar to the connect four where kids are having fun with each other. They're working together, working on social skills, but they're practicing those math facts. Same thing with when it comes to reading instruction, some of those foundational skills and phonemic awareness and phonics. Just really making sure kids have the opportunity to practice those, have it, receive explicit instruction in those. And also doing so in a way that doesn't take away from the grade level material. In addition to that, we also have particular resources I've shared with the curriculum council and school board. A curricular resource map, it just kind of lays on all of the different resources that we have in our district by each grade level and content area. Um, there are a few spaces that we would like to strengthen. There are a few spaces that we've got multiple resources for the same roller standards. We're gonna clean that up a little bit. Um, some critical resources we've used most recently are achieve three thousand, it's a literacy program. We have actually used it for quite a while. It is something research-based, we see growth from our students in it. And we've kind of returned back to that with like a refreshed view on it. Um, it was, we weren't getting the best feedback from students, from staff, had some concerns about it. And we started to look at, how do we do this in a way that's meaningful for students? How do we do this in a way that directly applies to the things that were learned? How do we build it into our schedules? And since, um, even just since the start of the year, we're seeing some significant growth in literacy, which is exciting. We also are starting to achieve math as a similar resource. Um, and then there are a couple, couple of other resources in different areas that we'll continue to improve and, and move forward with. And then the last one is standards work. And this one is can be broken onto a couple of different categories, but the pacing guys, you can see on our, our school website breakdown, which standards are taught? Which quarters or which units at the middle school, high school level? And just cleaning that up a little bit, working across multiple grade levels to see where there may be gaps or spaces. I mentioned that meeting earlier, um, that attended yesterday, that there was a measurement in data as an old area based in our data. We can see that that's an area that we need to improve across the board, pretty much four K through twelve. And so that grade level prioritize that standard, they're not gonna teach it longer and deeper. And they're gonna do more assessments and if students aren't getting it, they're gonna provide interventions. And if they are getting it, they're gonna go even beyond that grade level standard and work at a higher grade level. And so that's exciting work that's happening. Also some vocal areas, they've mentioned data as one of them. There are a few others that, that have emerged and then also combining them. And, um, I mean, there's no way to work harder, we're working so hard, but sometimes there's ways to work smarter and we're excited to find those ways. Um, and then another important term is mastery. We're noticing when we look at the data, especially related to the star assessment, which is our district assessment, that students are introduced to standards and they're doing very well when they're introduced to them. But they're not achieving a level of mastery, so they become so fluid and so automatic that they can just apply it to the next thing. And so that work needs to happen across grade level so that we have a common understanding of mastery and a common way to assess mastery to ensure all students are achieving it. And the final one is students evolve into the process. Making sure students understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, that's connected to their interests, it's connected to their future plans, their academic and career planning. Uh, making sure that families are involved, we get to send home those, um, games and practice things with families. If they're allowed to do additional work with resources like a G three thousand, we can share that with families, having families come in for parent-teacher conferences for math and literacy nights. Um, and just working together with, as a, as a united front. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight for tonight was progress monitoring. Um, this image right here, this circle shows what a comprehensive assessment system looks like. The little green space right there is what state testing is, um, consists of. So out of a hundred percent, I believe it's two, about two percent of assessments we do are state testing. It's such a small part of what we do and it's difficult because we receive those results six months later. Um, and then we take the test six months later. And so it's a, it's a tricky cycle if we were to only use that state data. If you look at the teal section, that's our district assessments and that's about eight percent of the assessments that we do in a comprehensive system. And the nice thing is our district assessments are aligning with the state assessments. And so we can monitor progress throughout the year. We don't have to wait until next October when we get data back. We can see students making growth right now. Our next assessment comes up just after winter break in January. And we have very specific areas that we're expecting to see growth on. And then the large blue portion of the circle is all the other assessments that happened throughout the day and throughout the year. This is in the classroom, what teachers are observing. This is a rubics, a project, some presentations, a test. And this has also been a goal of ours, you probably remember it from our building smart goals, is really strengthening our assessments so that they're also aligned with those other data points and that we're continuing to see student growth on a daily to weekly basis. All right. Spoiler for our friends, that's it.
Tell me about the fast bridge.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep, so we're talking about that circle that would be in the teal box. And so that's very similar to the star assessment. And, um, the nice thing about fast bridges, uh, it has features that allow you to, um, have a diagnostic assessment. So if a student is going lower literacy, what part of literacy is it? It's a tendency, it's a comprehension, it's a vocabulary. So it has another level of assessments that let us know exactly what a student needs to work on. And if there are multiple areas, what's the top priority for that student that will help them make the most growth? And then the third level of fast bridge is that it promise monitor. So if we're doing a specific intervention or support with a student, we can do a short three to five-minute assessment with them every week and see that growth that they're making. If they're not making growth, we change plans. If they are, we keep going and we're gonna add more. It's, it's a new system for it. We're really sort of in the piloting stage. We tried it last year with a few students who were below proficiency. It was awesome. So now we have it kindergarten through six, we're trying to pilot at the middle school, high school for students below proficiency. And, um, it does give some competitive to star. So it's kind of nice to come here and make sure we don't wanna just throw one out. The star's been really helpful and it's very close to the line to forward and ACT. And ACT is by year, but it's been a great resource for us so far. Yeah, yeah, great question.
Did you maybe just talk, the data sometimes is back in the day, you get it once a year, you look at it, you try your best. Can you talk about the the data mining program that we have? And when teachers are getting together in groups in their professional learning communities. We have a system that pulls, called EduClimber. It's just about the access and ease of staff and how they can use this data where it's no longer a mystery and bolder than than one presentation. It's daily.
Yeah, yep. So we have a resource and you probably remember the purchase of EduClimber. And it combines all data points that we want into one program. So we're not learning. Five, ten, fifteen different programs. We can learn one program and we can even cross reference it. Um, it can include Forward, A C Inspire, A C T, um STAR, Fast Bridge, even grade level assessments. It can also cross reference demographics. You could just look at third grade, you could look at um any type, any type of way that you wanna organize it. Um, students in a specific group. And that's been a a really nice resource that both both Ms. Brent and I have done training on. We've worked a lot with Matt Larson as our technology coach on it. Um, we're um opening that up as teachers are trying to use it in the professional learning community meetings. Um, and that's just been a really huge asset. And just another big shout out to the C C uh twelve team. They really have helped us dig deep into. All kinds of data. Um, we've had, we need to really understand. All the depth of it. I mean, it's one thing to kind of look at the surface and see where we're we're missing things, but just really analyzing it have been awesome. They've helped with EduClimber and as well.
Yeah, I think that's part of EduClimber I really like is that we can really dig in to the groups. And see like what are the differences between certain groups and why are we seeing those differences? And then helping, that helps us with our with our plans as we're moving forward. How do we build? And and close those gaps that we're seeing. And that's, I really like EduClimber because it helps us really. Needle in to what's really going on.
Right, right down to the individual student. You can also enter the interventions that have been tried with that student. And it'll pull their data all the way through the system.
Is that like the the Y D?
Yeah, like the two big ones are Yash Local and EduClimber. So we're using EduClimber here.
I just wanna say I have a really important question. Just last night when we were just talking about it. We all want to do this change. And um I think the plans that you have to go so really great. It's gonna make our school better overall and the teachers more engaged and. I was even impressed just tonight. I was hearing teachers not knowingly know that I know. These details, bring these details up and talk about and see the excitement in the teachers talking about it. So. Yeah, it's great to see the carryover. Any other further questions regarding this topic? Okay, we will move on to. Um, just a reminder that each person that would like to speak. Um, or in or invited to share input with us, that's three minutes. Um, any concerns or comments about individuals are not appropriate for public comment. Please be respectful. Um, persons, if you're joining, joining through Zoom. And you would like to speak through, uh make a public comment, you're wel- welcome to, just put your name in the chat. And um, when it's appropriate, we'll um call on you. Because we are now um recording this, um. We, if you could please come and step up in front of the square table. There's a white line or white piece of tape on the floor. Just so we have the best um visual and odd um sound that we can for the. Is there anyone, we'll start in the library. Is there anyone in the library that would like to make a public comment?
I sent the board the congressional testimonies and evidence about the dangers of the COVID nineteen vaccine today, the hearing was yesterday. Expert doctors and special specialists unanimously recommended an immediate suspension of the COVID vaccines. Just like it has been in other countries. Such decisions require our officials to be courageous enough to do the right thing. We've asked you to make the public aware of the adverse events. But the board has not been responsive. It's time to educate the public. So that they can be attentive to their children and recognize possible effects. The board must believe that they are tightly bound by the state agencies and their desired programs. But I can assure you that local elected officials are directly responsible for the known health hazards in the community. And this board should be looking for the hazards that affect the health of the students. Sure, you haven't had time to watch today, but as you watched the two hour hearing, I truly hope that you notice. A lot of things, but one thing for sure, I would hope you would notice. That as time passes and months, the adverse events actually increase for the vaccinated. And that is, that is exactly the reason for being proactive. This is the reason I'm always here. Cause I got two my own that are vaccinated and. And I know it's a problem and you you'll see that when you watch. I hope that you'll take the time to watch. You should should educate yourselves. So. Please have the courage to lead locally. I will always help you. This is a very important subject. It's not gonna go away. I'm happy that the kids aren't burdened with COVID stuff here. It's really affected my kids, but. Guys gotta be careful. Vaccines are this is serious stuff. Please watch the hearing. Lot of evidence was presented. This the rate of death is just going up. Some cancers four hundred percent. And there's cancer in our communities. Hope you will take the time.
Brandon Lindy, Tom Barksdale. Um, I appreciate the info Ivy and Ms. Brent uh presented. Uh, would like to have seen that about ten months ago. One year ago, I stood in front of basically the same board. And lit into you guys for the failure of the education system in the district. If you'll remember, scores were also terrible last year, which seemed to catch some by surprise that students did so poorly with the blended learning format. In the January meeting, I will credit former principal King. She took responsibility for the shortcomings under her control. And she sat down with me and my wife. And seemed to have a good plan to get back to providing a good quality education in the high school and middle school. Ms. Moretto also had uh. Poor results, but they were but not as bad as the state average. Um, but she did acknowledge there is work to be done in her building as well. There were plans proposed to reevaluate the entire benchmarking process over the summer. To my knowledge, the results of that process have not been shared with the public in a regular board meeting until tonight. Unfortunately, knowing the failures of the teaching methods used during the first year of the pandemic, the board then spent January and February stubbornly trying to exert authority. They did not possess to steal educational opportunities from the children of the district. The complete lack of respect for parents who are fighting against these ridiculous policies and illegitimate attempts to quarantine students. Culminated in my attempt to defund the school board six weeks ago. Board had a strong show of support from the community stating that they wanted board salary to represent a sign of respect for the time and effort of the board. I made it clear and I'll continue to make it clear, I don't respect the work the board is doing. As an example, whether there have been private discussions on the school improvement program or not. There is not. A public discussion of it until the last meeting, when it was already known that the school would receive another subpar report card. To show you where the priorities of the board lie, the topic of teacher bonuses was discussed last December, January, February, March, April and August. In that same span, I could only find one or two instances where school improvement was discussed. And based off the slideshow, it appears we're still in the planning stage. One year after the commitment to improve the quality of student education and a few months after Dr. Wyatt's commitment to renewed focus on academic rigor. If I were a member of the board, I would certainly want the fruits of that work to be front and center every meeting. What are we doing differently? What's working and what what isn't? The admin reports provide a small glimpse into this, but are generally just an overview. From what I can find, there's only one posted agenda for the school improvement committee. I don't know if it's just gotten together or if you guys. Have been meeting and you've just now started posting the board. I know there's been a lot of changes to the documents that are available to the public and I appreciate that. I appreciate the recording, um which was voted on last meeting, uh to aid in people who have other commitments in the community so they can watch back later if they can't stay. Thank you.
Last night was the first district. Oh, sorry.
Erin Austin, that's a date address or? I just wanted to say uh very publicly, thank you for your public service. Um. This is not an easy uh gig and I've, as a parent, have been so, so happy with what my kid comes home with. Um, they're kind, they're compassionate, they're thoughtful, they're knowledgeable. The district has never failed our kids, not once. And I think the board has always been um really uh just great in. And supporting our teachers and our administrators in doing what we know is best. Um, thanks for the the presentation, the the improvement plans, which I'm a part of, like, uh you know. There might be some comments about this is not, you know, this is the first time, but this is the first public comment of them. I mean, I know it started last year, hiring processes. Uh, we've hired interventionists, we've hired, uh you know, um we've really pooled a lot of precious resources into the elementary school. To make sure that, you know, they're starting with a the strong foundation. So I just appreciate all that work that you've been doing. And also kind of wanted to come here as a representative of the the very, very large majority of people that support you. Um, I know it can get very uh difficult, people wasting your time, wasting our money on lawsuits. That um have nothing to do with actually educating our kids and. I really thank you for weathering the storm and just focusing on doing what's best for our kids. So, thanks.
Anyone in the on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Well, yeah.
Just for clarity, Beijing last night was the first official meeting where the board members were involved. There's lots of other meetings going on that are under that name. But they're not for the these board member meetings. Moving on to approval of financial reports.
Had to review uh November's financial reports and I would make a recommendation to approve them. Um, just wanna give a little shout out to Janet, who's uh just been very helpful. And anytime I would have a question, she's right there. And uh and everything is just so organized and just ready to go. It's made that transition for me spring. So I appreciate it.
All in favor? Me opposed, motion carries. Moving on to long range planning.
Well, that's. The minutes are not approved, uh but some of the major takeaways uh were of the school improvement teams, uh which you heard about in the spotlight today. And the middle school and high school request proposals for feasibility study, which you will hear about later in our discussion items. Uh, so I'll just jump to another highlight, which is just the communication plan for the district. And um and there was just some great conversation, but this is uh. It's still at a point where the long range plan committee doesn't necessarily have all the expertise to connect the dots. Um, or the arrows is the case. Um, and so we're going to try uh try and get some more information from other committees in the district. Um, as well as the board to improve that communication plan. Um, organize our voices in our district um and in. Um, and support our students. Oh, yeah, and then go ahead and fill in the blanks.
Also expand uh communication plan identified specific areas and the the committee talked about, it's not inclusive enough. So. How do students fit in alumni, fit in support staff, fit in instructional staff? So um. Gonna break each of the sections that I sent out to the board, just the board section, but administration, district administrator, instructional staff, support staff. Students and alumni will all form s- similar little responsibilities. And then we'll look for what graph is more up to date than several years ago. So that I mean, that that was, we're running, I think the the RFP was uh another big part in talking about that in the discussion when we get there.
Thanks. Moving on to administrative reports.
Um, busy time again. Um, your own budget cycles, we're already starting to look at, talk about, pre-plan, plan for. Our budget and staffing proposal for the spring. Um, middle school, high school, schedule implications, work from the district committee. How does that impact budget staffing? What are the needs to make this plan happen? Summer professional development for staff, what does that look like? Math instruction. Reading instruction. So we're starting to put all those things together. Uh, we do have some preliminary numbers. I did share those with the board in my report because January you vote to limit or not limit open enrollment. Uh, so we did send you some very preliminary numbers on, you know, where we think the elementary primarily is gonna be. Um, no word on the state budget yet. Uh, it will be late. So they're just gonna come back in session coming up in January, February. Governors indicating that that's top priority to um address the budget since. It's a big part of what they do, uh but I'm not anticipating anything until the late spring, possibly summer. Uh, financially, we're in a a good position. Uh, we still have two positions out there. We have instruct full time instructional assistant posted. Um, we have a limited term instructional assistant posted. We were able to um interview and hire for our assistant financial. Assistant in the district office. And it was an interview tonight for a long term sub for family consumer science for the second semester at the high school. So. Those are the outside of some coaching things that we have out there. I think we're fairly pleased. And I'll I'll say this now because we can bring it up later. One of the things in the auditor's report that has come always up. Is that check and balance and not having that second set of eyes in that office, now having a financial assistant. We'll finally get that.
Segregation of duties.
Out of our auditor's report, so.
Yeah, lots of really neat stuff happening at the middle school, high school. Um, you can see in the report, all the really. Awesome field trips that have been happening with our counseling department. They have done so many awesome trips to different schools. Tech schools, colleges, all over the place. Um, getting kids who typically.
Um, getting kids who typically. Don't get involved in those kind of activities are now starting to see like. They're starting to see the benefits of them and they're starting to sign up. And so it's really, really. Exciting to see all that stuff happening. So we're on a little bit of a breakdown, a lot more will start happening again. Uh, late winter, early spring, we'll start ramping up with those things again. So that's been really cool. Um, one, one that I was personally very excited about them going to was the Sony Kowalski Day. Um, A U W Superior, so that's a math. Uh, women in math day that so they took some of the kids up to see that kind of go through competitions and stuff. So that was. Your dear to my heart. Really awesome blood drive yesterday, sixty-one donors total. So. That's a hundred and two hundred and. A hundred and eighty-three people potentially that are community safe. So that's really cool. Fire Nation has some cool shows coming up, um, some background from. Band with the Halloween. Um, their Apple Fest parades, Halloween parades, had some really cool, uh, the north. The um, all conference band that they did at Northwestern. So there's a report has some cool pictures in there that stuff. They were so super excited about that. Other things again, um, it's on the thing for approval today. Uh, we did hire a part-time instructional aide who is here. Two days in the afternoon for the study hall after school. So he's tutoring there. Um, and then Thursdays for now, he is coming in full days and then doing after school work with the study hall. He is a college student, so once semester changes his schedule will change a little bit, but um, he's blending right in. He has the right. Outdoorsy activity attitude that fits right in. He's he's a really great, I call him a kid, he's in college. He's younger than me, he's a kid. Um, but he's doing really well. We have um, Ms. Diana Mann who is covering for Zach Olson while he's on our paternity leave. Cutest baby ever. Uh, so that's really good. That's helped relieve Mr. Olson a lot of some of his worries. So. Um, parent teacher conferences tonight, have them on Tuesday and last Thursday for the middle school. Our professional development committee, we looked into, we've started looking into next year in the in-service and what can we do with that? How do we make that interesting? Um, put out a survey about whether they enjoyed having the. Videos and things that we have to watch the mandatory videos, whether they liked doing that on the first day or whether they want to do that on their own. Surprisingly, it was like sixty percent. We're like, yes, we like tapping in on that day. Okay, so how do we make that more entertaining, less painful? So we've been talking about how do we do that? We did talk about the potential of bringing in. A nationally known speaker, um, but the ones that we reached out to, I was like, man, maybe I should become a motivational speaker. Cause they were. Well out of the budget for what we wanted to do with base. So. We'll move on and we'll try to find some fun things to be able to do in order to get things. Really motivated and feeling really good when we start new next year. So that's kind of been the big thing that we've been talking about recently. Um, couple of things that we've updated in based on our school improvement and just things that we've started. We began doing athletics, have been doing bi-weekly checks for grades since the start of the school year. So we have now incorporated that into the entire high school where they do that in health class every two weeks. Created a form, you saw that forum management includes. Um, that is what the kids fill that out themselves and then the teachers walk around and talk to them. Okay, so tell me what's going really well. Tell me where you need support. I see this is happening in this particular grade. How can I help you with that? And then they take that information the next day into their PLC to discuss any concerns they might have with. A student in that grade level and then figuring what's our plan to be able to support them. So either they'll reach out to Jen Lutz, to me, to Ms. Pingle, like whoever. Um, and then we start working on helping them. So that's been really. Really beneficial and we're starting to see our. F list that we print every two weeks has dropped significantly since we started doing that. So that's really awesome. Um, you saw also second semester, I am changing kind of the bell schedule for lunches. Um, we ten forty-five is way too early for our middle school kids to be eating lunch. It just is. You know, like some of the kids are not eating breakfast because they eat lunch at ten forty-five, so they're not ready to go during the day. Or they eat breakfast and then lunch and then by the end of the day they're starving. Um, so it just. It wasn't beneficial. So we're shifting it, we're shifting to one high school lunch, moving the middle school lunch back and. Everybody that I've talked to about it is like, yes. So hopefully that'll just main like streamline everything that we're doing. Um, again, our school improvement committee, we've talked about that a lot. We just met the other day. We're starting to fine tune that framework for testing protocols. Um, which we will focus on a little bit again this coming Monday as well. And then some courses that went through to the curriculum council that we are looking at the potential for approval next month. Um, computer science A is a course that Janet Jensen has brought in. It's a second year programming course. Um, which is a full year, full credit course. It's an, it's a. Class that can help kids then further their exploration into that computer science background and determine whether if that's a way that they want to go. Um, so it has some second post-secondary options where they can go and like check things out and do some visits and and things like that to see if that's what they're interested in. Um, two new ELA courses at the high school level based on student. Interest, excuse me, student interest, the English teachers. Survey the students and like, hey, we're some interested in topics. And so two classes that they came up, one, science fiction and fantasy would be a semester course. And that would be, um, I, this course will meld, I'm reading rap, I think. Literary art with scientific and philosophical speculations using your variety of instructional practices. Sounds amazing. Um, so they're just using something that really catches kids' attention to get them reading and really diving into books. And then to back that, the next semester is a nature and environmental writing. So they'll be able to go out into nature and really dig into some of the. Muses that they might find in nature to help them do different styles of writing. So those are the three classes that we are proposing next month. Um, and then just a course change from English twelve to be more applicable to what it is they're actually doing to the class. So. It would be not English twelve, it would become applied communications. So those are the, those are the major things happening. At those high school level right now.
It sounds like the computer science.
Yes, yeah, because her her numbers are growing in that area. And so this is something that now she. She worked last year to get it in, but there were some tweaks that we needed to be made. And now this year it's really, she's also going to be running it back to back with another course that she already does. So she'll run two courses kind of at the same time to expand that even further. Yeah, so it's pretty exciting.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Um, I think I'll start off with the lockdown drill. Um, we do, we did connect the lockdown drill at most. Each year until we had them in November. Um, they are not simulations. It is something that we let students and staff and actually this we let families do ahead of time as well. That was a request that was made and we structured families ahead of time to give them the heads up. Um, it was a pretty short drill. Um, we have students, yeah, close the doors, lights are down. Um, both me and Officer Johnson would go through the building and just look for any areas based on his expertise recommendation that we may need to approve to ensure that our. Our faces safe. Um, and I think he was really pleased with how it went. And then, um, very similar process at the middle school.
Very similar process, the middle school high school. It took a little longer because it was my first one in the building and. We spent a lot of time really digging into kind of like where are the nips and crannies. So with, for me, it was Officer Flag that came, um, really worked through he. Flashlights in all the windows and checking to see if you can see any feet or digging to find like what are the doors in the building that are not locked? Or are maybe broken and can't be locked. And so we have that list of things that we're um, working on fixing as well. Um, Officer Flag's quote was, if I didn't know that there were kids in this building right now, I would not have known there are kids in this building. So it it went really well. They did a great job with it.
Well, I'll move into a couple of the updates of the elementary. Um, at the top of the board report, which is, um, of course given to the board, but also online now. Uh, you can see some examples of student learning at a staff meeting. We had a staff to share an example of. Learning that happened with them and I think it's thanks to balance out, we talk a lot about state assessments. We talk a lot about. Um, some of those more standardized rigorous assessments, but it's really nice to talk about student learning in all forms. And so just to read out a few of them, um, some of the great things I've seen so recently done is split larger multiplication factors into smaller, easier parts. Sort of river rocks by the characteristics. Um, using science vocabulary words, um, just selecting smart spots around the room that kind of fits into that testing protocol is. What do you need to learn to do your best in helping empower students to do that? Um, reading constant follow content or CVC, if you've ever heard that term, use a lot of the elementary. Um, collaborating in small groups to research and write articles on football, um, hooking a reader into an interesting story. Um, sharing random aspects in the hallway. I love that one. Um, applying science to things that are happening at home and just sharing exciting things that they're learning with each other. So. And you want to just kind of highlight some of those special things happening on a day-to-day basis. Um, the ELC is really doing great. I just wanted to give a little thank you to the school board for, I know that was a top priority, was on several agendas. And we are fully staffed. Um, we have an increase in student enrollment. We have a decrease on our waitlist. It's really exciting to see. Um, really wonderful things happening there. We did receive survey results back. We had one that was for ELC families. So many wonderful things. You see that on the board report. Um, there's also some areas of improvement and just some feedback on times and volunteers and. Just making sure we have that that information from our families. And then also there was one to uh, community members who are not in our ELC. Um, but have children under the age of five, just to get a little bit more information on what needs are out there. We know we have a big waitlist. We know there's a need, but wanting to figure out a little bit more, what are some of the barriers, including costs, including transportation? And then this wasn't a specific question on surveys, but something we've been hearing is a need for or an interest in a four K program that's um, greater than two days a week. And so that is something other districts are exploring and and perhaps something we can gather more data on as well. Um, in addition to that, we also have a school report card meeting coming up next week. We're exploring a different resource. Right now we use a Word document that's self-created by our district. On the bright side of it, it's standards-based, um, it's very student-centered. It's a nice section for comments for parents to see what's. Happening um, with the student learning, but it is really time to move for teachers. And um, there are just some some tricky things about it when it comes to printing and sharing and. Um, as we move forward in our collaboration process and as we continue to update our standards and our process. Um, we may be interested in using a different resource. There's one called Feature Ease. We did a little demo a few years ago prior to COVID. It looked really great. We're gonna look back into it. I'm happy to keep you posted on that process. And then my last update is just on curriculum council. This uh, December meeting really focused on professional learning communities or PLCs and that leadership since we have representatives from. Different grade levels and content areas. Uh, what's happening in this meeting? What are the focus areas? What resources are you finding helpful? We share those out. There's some cool things happening, middle school, high school, elementary, T P with them and same thing vice versa. So really nice just to have that. K twelve collaboration. And then we did talk a little bit about the ways in which we publish our curriculum. We have it on our website right now in a couple of different formats. Uh, historically, we've used B Y O C or Bill John curriculum. It should switch names to embark. Um, it has some benefits to it. We've put a lot of work into it. Um, but it also is, it has some drawbacks to them. Especially not being a really user-friendly for families and for students. And so curriculum council is looking at what's a really nice, fair, consistent way to share exactly what we're learning. So students, families and and teachers, even different grade levels and content areas, have to get access to it. So. That's a big goal for us and something that we'll move forward with for next year.
And the last piece, just on administrative reports is to just share with the board the process we're going to use. Uh, for outstanding balances. So we're sending a letter. Asking parents or notifying parents they have a negative balance. Asking them to contact the district to pay the balance or make arrangements. So, uh, in your board packet and the shared Google Drive, there's, you know, a letter, payment plan. If we receive no feedback from the parent, no connection to the school, no attempt to pay, even if it's the smallest amount. Then we'll bring back to the board, um, probably by January, a list of families that fortunately we exhausted everything that we can do. And we'll need to look at small claims court. So then you'll get a modified list. There's. Pages and pages right now of outstanding balances, about twenty-two thousand dollars in the district, just in the boot service. Um, some have made arrangements to pay. Um, this letter will ask them to actively engage with us so we can work with them to get their budgets down. Policies, we don't cut students off meat, uh, nor do we limit them to just peanut butter and anything they eat the meal. Uh, they're à la carte at the middle school, high schools, cut off, um, but we don't deny children access to food. Um, it's worked in the past. Uh, we haven't done it for a few years since. Parents have not had to pay for a few years. Um, so we're going to kick that back into gear, similar with the E N C outstanding balances that work through the ELC. Uh, Ivy and Jane, uh, to make either payment, payment arrangements, or unfortunately. Uh, lose their spot in the ELC. So just letting the board know, this process will start. Um, the families in the past have been very gracious and just contacted us and we've worked. You might get some calls. On why are you trying to do this to us prior to winter break? So I'm just preparing you. Uh, we're going to work on collecting twenty-two thousand dollars business side of the houses, a bunch of money. Those will go out probably Monday.
Yep.
Are, are any of those people that have the outstanding balance, they just didn't fill out the. Free reduced, would they qualify for that?
It's hard, it's hard to tell. Uh, we do, in that process of communicating with families, offer mine, let them know that, hey, there's a hardship situation. Here's, you know, not that we can fill the form out for them, it's illegal, but we can let them know where the form is, provide the form through the elementary, middle school, high school. Um, but we do listen to that process with them.
And we can't just single out any family and send it to them with these notices.
Getting up here, we do a little drawing, you know, so. Uh, anyone who submits their form, whether they qualify or not gets entered into drying and we get a pretty good, pretty good turnout.
What do you think the percentages that we?
In terms of collections?
No, like how many people filled this one?
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot, but there's a lot of them that don't have to even fill out the form. They know they're direct certified because they've already got boot stamps. So they're not going to bother filling out the form. So it's really hard.
And those who know they don't qualify, don't give it out.
Right.
More to send a form with the letter stating and in the letter saying.
We can't because you're singling out just people who owe money. We'd have to send it out.
The whole we can notify the district.
And the whole, you know, the welcome packets. Then you'd be redundantly sending it to people who've already talked about, then they'd be calling and saying.
There's a benefit to the families to fill it out, in many cases, but there's also a significant benefit to the school district. They have them. We are right on the edge. All going for lots of additional things that right now we just don't. Twenty-first century schools brands lots of money out there. We just are percentage points below. Uh, people go reapply for that. But that will start, so that's.
This isn't our first time having this, this week before COVID, this was sending. Moving on to the consent agenda, just one item.
I moved to prove the consent agenda.
All in favor? Oh, I didn't ask any discussion. I do have discussion. Um, we are going to, with the change of moving to videotaping. And posting the poll meeting online, we're going to change how we. Post our minutes as well. It was recommended by W S A S B not to be so thorough. So we are going to change that to more of a very condensed format, really legally, all we should be posting. Is the motions. So even public comments and discussion should not be posted. Verbatim, so we will move to that format and then have. Access to the video. So all in favor to approve it in its run November. Me opposed? Special items, um, legislative advocacy. Like Dr. Wyatt said, the budget process is just starting and they actually just selected the members. For the committee, so that's just starting. The, there is one thing that I saw. In late November that came through, that fifty-two million dollars in library aid. Was passed and then. The information will be shared with the districts, that the estimate about what each district will get. Um, on before January tenth. And then.
Our initial allocation is twenty-one thousand seven eighty-nine.
Well, see, it's old news.
But that's just the initial because they're they're giving us right away the. But that's just the initial, because they're, they're giving us right away the amount that we got last year. So then like last year, we started out at eighteen and ended with twenty-one seven eighty-nine, so it will probably increase.
Okay, and payments um, should start no later than May first. Um, the other piece is that it's kind of a little bit well, I think I'll just wait. Um, for the well, no, I'll put it in the, for the convention and the delegates, um, I looked at all the proposals and resolutions. Um, that are up for discussion and um, I wouldn't say there's anything that I read that it's like, yes, that is a big item for our district. Um, the there is one on high cost transportation or for geographic large school districts for pupil transportation, do we qualify for that one?
High cost transportation, yes.
Okay, so there is, um, there is a motion, a resolution in there. Um, to make that more permanent, basically. Um, otherwise, there wasn't a lot that I thought, I mean, there's, I would, I guess I would just say this is posted on the W A S B website. Um, and it would be great for anyone to look through it, um, especially if um, we're sending a delegate, so we know what our board stands on, on areas or if there's areas that we want to definitely, that would poison our opinion under. Um, we will have another board meeting before the convention, so we can talk about it then.
Thanks for bringing that up.
So once we submit the name to be a delegate, we're gonna get a whole packet of information for that delegate, we'll scan it. Put it in the shared drive with the entire board, we'll have it on the agenda in January, in case we have something going down. The board will have that opportunity to say, yep, 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 yep.
Otherwise, not a lot of evidence in the legislation. Feel like I say that a lot, but there's little bits here and there, do you, do you see anything that I missed?
I mean, everything will really check in when they get back in session. Um, we'll probably have a huge policy review, probably February, March.
Especially after all these things. Okay, moving on to C C twelve updates.
Okay, the meeting was on November fifteenth, I was not able to attend, but I did get the highlights from the secretary. So sportsmanship, uh, summit was held in C C twelve. Um, they had representation from every school district and the L C O J P school participate in the event. Learning about being a good host to other schools, respecting visiting teams, et cetera. Every district team, student and adult built an, an action plan to take back to their schools about how they can promote good sportsmanship in their district. Um, C C will be conducting the superintendent's speech for Northwestern School District, Phillips School District, it was collaborative in the C C five to promote a search for C C ten in the district. Uh, there was an oral report by Amanda Trot. Um, she talked about supporting new educators and use one through three experience, and that's available through the peer review mentor grant from D P D. And then the building update, uh, the most recent offer didn't go up the vote, so they're still continuing to look like that.
I don't know if it came up at the C C meeting, but um, C C twelve and conference superintendents were in the middle of a process of renaming the conference, so schools submitted, Washburn was one of those who did, I think there was only four who submitted. Um, information and data back, we're gonna be meeting and voting on a new conference name in the next few weeks, and that probably should be changed, just to let the board know. Uh, we did remove uh, the conference name in our gymnasium, as other schools have done. And then all the schools did decide to leave up all previous awards, championships, uh, as an education piece, so we're just following along with all of those schools.
Moving on to the W A S B thing, that's mentioned, delegates. So that will meet up in January. It's eighteen January, is that right? Um.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I thought we used the travel now on Tuesday.
Is there anyone considering going at this point? Okay, I, if there's something when we read through, I, I also, I looked at the
Looking for official recognition by tapping on. I thought you were trying to get.
I saw it, it's interesting, cause we were, we were like, I feel, I felt like we were like, oh yeah, we're gonna go, and then, and then I'm
Well, it's hard, it is, it is hard to get there, it's, and that's where, for me, it's like, it's uh, sign, and probably for everyone, it's significant. Give up that much P T O of family vacation and, you know, it's, but and I will say that, you know, like I looked at it and the flavor of the conference has really changed. It wasn't as inviting to me as it has been in the past. Um, I felt like it's taken a little bit of a proberate turn, so it was I mean, it probably still has a lot of really good information, but it didn't draw me in like the other years, so um that's, those are just my pieces, but if we look through this proposal, um, the for the delegates, are the, in the, the resolutions. The resolutions, and we feel that there's some things that we really want to represent our district in, I will go down for the Wednesday day. I'll do a day, um, there, and there's some things I'll definitely learn, but facility studies, there's, there's definitely breakout sessions on that day that I've got a bit from, and I don't mind. I, I think that would be a good use of time, but I don't, I personally don't use them a lot these days, so that would be you guys wouldn't mind looking through that, a discussion. Um, I suppose Jan, we don't need to know though, I guess put me on.
Rooms, the rooms were already booked, so.
And I can't remember early, if it's today or if it's December, there's like an early registration, but
Yeah, and I think the tough thing is, is you have to pay for all of it, it's like one, all or none. But you could get, I, I do know, like last year, I um, had to cancel something. This issue, a personal issue, and you can cancel quite a, get close up to the day, get your money back, so we could put me in and then.
But you're not gonna require a room.
Would I require a room? I would, yeah, let's keep one room, yeah. Otherwise, that would be early morning.
Long day.
Long night, right?
Dark in January. Well, it's gonna be dark, it's gonna be dark, yeah. All right. Any other discussion about that? I will also say that in lieu of those, um, I feel like the W A S B is putting out more education online too, that um, that if we wanna tap into doing webinars and the podcasts and, I mean, I've been doing those here and there, and I feel like those are super helpful too. The thing that's beneficial about going down to the conference is that you get to talk to different school districts, which is nice. Um, okay, moving on to the Washburn Educators Council. We um, any thoughts on the information that was provided to us?
Uh, probably just like that undertone of how do you balance, um learning how to take a test with the love of learning, which you cannot measure. Um, or it's more difficult to measure. Um, and, uh, and it, and I, I appreciate that conversation and I'm glad that they brought it up, and obviously guys have been talking about it in your, um, in your building meetings, um, and, uh, and I and I can appreciate that sentiment, I guess I just wanted to say that.
What I can tell, there's a lot of conversation. It's, it's nice not that, like just the little bits that I've been hearing either through teachers or students or part of the committee. It hasn't been
A barrier.
Well, that is part of the discussion, like, if, if not all of it.
Yeah, so, and what, just one thing to add in is, when we started the initial data dig yeah, sorry, to work with outside experts and consultants. I think there was a little bit of fear that maybe we'd have to lose the things that we love and that make us special, and we need to get that high achievement to show up on standardized assessments. Um, and I, I feel a hundred percent confirmed, we're sure that what we're doing is right, and that that level of learning really does is what results in high quality learning, high quality instruction, there are things that we can do to improve that within that love and within that, all those things that make us special, so I'm feeling excited and motivated about it, but I think it is, it's, it's a fear, I had a, a few months ago, I was doing this work and it's a fear teachers have as they dig into this work and families probably too, and we'll always keep that a, a balanced priority.
One thing is that this was a very small window in the history of a very successful system. So we have an amazing staff, we have systems that work. And then we had something, and I'm not using this as an excuse, but we had something that stopped that from happening, disconnected the learning and the people from where we do our best work, which is with kids. And that's what this reflects. If our A C T scores showed something that was significant and we mapped that over time, then it would be a system thing. It's not a system thing, it's refocusing, re-energizing, taking the data. Having our experts work with the kids and providing them data, how to use the data, resources and professional development to reach a changing child who for two years was not connected to the school. Whose parents might not have been connected to the school or connected to the learning process at the soul. There were, for me, it's not, this is not a panic situation, it's, okay. We have great school, we have a very good school district, we wanna be great. We had this experience, we gotta get kids caught back up, staff caught back up, everyone re-engaged. Without having to change everything.
The testing throughout the state, throughout the country, must have done the same thing, I mean, it's not, it didn't just happen in Washburn.
Report card, the grade we received. I focus in on achievement and the growth. Just look at that part, that's the most important part to us, not how they waited. How are our students doing?
Well, and we all also learned other things during that time.
There, um, because we're starting to talk about we have information about open enrollment. Um, in this report, there's also concerns about class sizes for, um, specifically grades fourth through sixth, and I know we have we're getting to have big, those class sizes are then going to be going into the middle school, which I know we're rude. Class sizes in middle school, those rooms are smaller. Um, do, do we need, I, I guess, can administration just address class sizes of our district and if we need to be looking at that?
Yeah, so right now, fourth, fifth, and sixth are right around the, between twenty and twenty-five um, per class, which other um, districts I think would probably be a little jealous of, um, but of course you know, our teachers, our, our community, we prioritize all that one-on-one connection, and you know, it's always really beneficial to be in some of those small group settings and a lot of instructional practices are working on how to implement small group settings, even in a large classroom. Um, another thing to sort of balance out is, um, the number of classroom teachers as well as interventionist or support, and so in most cases, we probably throw the whole building um, two adults in the classroom at the same time, cause we're finding that's so beneficial to student learning, and what works well with a teacher leading a small group works even better with two teachers leading two small groups or multiple small groups, we can reach so many students that way, so um, it, that's kind of part of the discussion too, is balancing out the number of teachers, the number of classrooms, and the number of interventionist, support staff, special education teachers as well.
One of the benefits of being here for twelve years now, I remember when we set the limits on classes.
I was actually at that meeting.
And just some board, was basically, I think, an all-new board.
I was not a board member.
The intent behind that is that is a guide, that is not set in stone. Uh, it's not, it's set in stone to react when we hit a number. But it's not set in stone to say that we have to stick to that high-end element, and a lot of that depends on um, the needs of the class, the needs of the students. Um, so we do have a board-approved guide for class sizes, but we're not limited to saying without labeling or identifying a class, this class may need some support, and we may need to have additional teachers, so that's where you look at it, um, where the policies, I mean what you approved as a board is a great guide, which worked well for us. Um, but we always had that flexibility to say, with this group or this situation, in the time we're in, we may need smaller class sizes, whatever grade it is, so we're not limited to that.
You see any of those classes as those types of classes that?
Well, I don't know about the class, but I know about the number, there, there's one that'll probably creep up. But if you looked at the numbers that we put in the preliminary for the class sizes. We're slightly over in several other areas, so there might not need to be, need to hire, maybe need to, to shed. All will play out over the next several months, but right now looking at where we're at going into January, we have
We have space. Um, then the only other comment that I have regarding this report is I did check in with Karen last night, um that's how the communication flow back and forth, and just making sure that they are getting what they need from the board, communication, and he again just, yeah, he thinks yes, will let us know. And there's, they, they need more from the board, but they just really appreciate us reading their comments. And I will make a, make a summary of this. Any other thing else for Washburn Education? Moving on to the discussion of our fees and feasibility study at the middle school, high school.
Yeah, um, shared in the shared drive with just the board at this time. Um, all of the bids that came in from four of the five companies that came through tour and met. Um, and what I'd like tonight is just, because they just all came in on Monday, long-range planning hasn't had a chance to look at those or discuss those either. I was just getting some slight feel from the board on the next step, um, I don't think we need to rush anything, it's a lot of good information, so I'd like the board to read each of those. Um, January would be a nice time, long-range planning, I'll discuss it, we'll bring a recommendation to the board, just phase one. And uh, just because a company does not, you know, if they're uh, awarded phase one, does not mean that they can't come back and bid on phase two or three. Um, or potentially what, you know, the larger project is, so thought the numbers were very good, I think they're very competitive. Um, I think there's strong interest from all four who bid the, the job. Um, I received calls throughout the day today from all of them. I let them know what the process was gonna be, that we're not gonna rush, we wanna just make sure we have all the information, the board will make it this in January, so um, they were all understanding. The timeline then would be if the board selects a company to do just the feasibility study in February and in January. They would have something back to the board probably by end of March, April. So please take a look at that. Um Also, I, I, just so you know where I'm at, I, I'm not limiting it just to the lowest bit, we wanna make sure that it's a good fit. If you read into some of the documentation, some of the companies in there may be a little bit higher than others. But they bring the lens of what Washburn is, bring healthy, sustainable building practices, knowledge, experience, not just talking that they're good, proof that they've done lots of projects with, so it might not Proof that they've done lots of projects, so it might not be who's the cheapest bid. We want the lens of that as well, so it might be something.
I noticed that. The bid and then the help with the referendum, one or two different prices, and some of them put it all in one price. So when we're looking through it, and then I noticed that some just seem like they're more into small projects. Any other discussion?
It was just nice to see, um, what they've done in the past and where they've worked. And like, some are really familiar, that it was more than part of Wisconsin and what you need here, that makes a big difference when you choose somebody.
And also look at the experience from the, not just the building, the engineering side, but the educational side. Because that lens also helps when they're gonna potentially be working with our staff. Having that direct access to those people on their staff is important.
Any other things people will look at, or thought were important to look at, or? As they look through, just kind of nice to, people kind of tune into.
I would just say, if you have any other, like, specific questions or things you want me, uh, to bring up to the long-range planning committee. Um, that's the Monday, usually before the board meeting also, so just let me know.
All the com, I'm sorry, all the companies were also open to presentation, so you'd want, before we make a final decision. To maybe have a special meeting in January, they all would come in and present, we'd give them, you know, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, whatever. And then you can make a decision after that, so, um, they were all open to presenting something to the board, or pick one here for these two. Just let me know and we can.
Thank you.
But very exciting times coming.
Moving on to the individual action items. Number one.
I move to approve Jamie Cook, uh, as a member of the long-range planning committee.
I'll second. Any discussion? Uh, in favor? Motion carries.
Look, number two, I make the motion to approve the leave of absence for Lisa Olson.
Any discussion? Uh, all favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three.
I move to approve the absence of Kimberly Garrity.
Any discussion? All favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four.
I move to approve the twenty one, twenty two auditors report.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Well, just again, another hats off to the excellent work that Janet does, uh, for our district and. Now that, uh, we potentially, we're hiring somebody, we will have a completely clean auditors report in neutral.
All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Motion carries. Number five.
I make motion that re-approves us, um, hiring of August Wallheim. For the part-time high school I position tutor.
Second. Discussion. I just think it's a really great way to bridge the gap, or bridge our needs and connect our students with more knowledge. And utilize resources and abilities, so it's great. All in favor? I, 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 any opposed? Motion carries. I love you.
Not for his sense. I move to approve Diana Mann, long-term associate for her middle school, high school choir.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Motion carries. With no further action items, the meeting is adjourned.
We have some, uh, water and.